Good morning, welcome to Hardin County Commissioners' Court. Today's Tuesday, March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one. It's ten AM and all members of the court are here. This meeting is called to order. Please rise to the invocation by Commissioner Kirkendall.
Not above it, please.
You're having the thought that we come before you today. Lord, we thank you for the honor and opportunity to conduct business on behalf of the people of Hardin County. Lord, today we lift up all the local governments, the cities, the counties, the school districts, Lord, that are on the borders. Father, we pray for grace and mercy, Lord, to get through this border crisis. Father, we do pray there'd be a quick and speedy resolution. Father, we pray you'd be with all our law enforcement and our first response people, Lord, in Hardin County. Ask that you'd be with them and protect those who protect us when we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Item number three, approve the minutes of the March ninth, two thousand twenty-one regular meeting presented by Glenn Austin.
So moved.
Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Roberts, second by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number four, consider approval of request to cancel all registered claims from March ninth, two thousand twenty-one, and approval of cash statement as presented by the Treasurer, Deborah McWilliams. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of one million, three hundred ninety-one thousand, six hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. On our cash report and general checking, we have twenty million, fifty-five thousand, five hundred sixty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. In tax pool, we have three hundred twenty-one dollars and nine cents for a total in cash funds of twenty million, fifty-five thousand, eight hundred eighty-three dollars and forty-eight cents. I do want to bring it to the court's attention that the tax pool rate this week is zero point zero two percent.
Is that the lowest it's been in a while?
It's the lowest it's been in a very long time.
Move to approve, let's begin.
Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. McWilliams. Item number five, authorization to pay county bills as presented by the county auditor, Angela Gore. Good morning, Ms. Gore.
Good morning. The pre-approach expenditures for March the tenth of the eleventh is about one hundred fourteen thousand, seventy-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. Pre-approach expenditures for March the seventeenth is seventy dollars, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. The expenditures for Commissioners' Court today are three hundred twenty-two thousand, one hundred sixty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents for total expenditures and transfers of eight hundred fifty-three thousand, seven hundred twenty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents. Gross payroll for Marshall eleven was five hundred three thousand, nine hundred thirty-six dollars and fifty-four cents, and the total transfers of that payroll was six hundred nineteen thousand, one hundred twenty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Motion for second. Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Gore. Number six, consider acceptance of the audited financial statements for Hardin County ESD number four for the year ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Ms. Gore, have you had an opportunity to review this financial statement?
I have, and I was in order.
Thank you, ma'am.
May I tell you, pray?
Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Cooper, second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven, discussion of possible action regarding refund exceeding the five hundred dollar limit for account numbers four-two-five-five-two for tax year two thousand nineteen and four-two-five-five-two, one-one-zero-four-one-four, four-three-nine-two-eight, one-two-three-two-five-seven, nine-two-three-seven-oh-three, one-one-nine-six-five-two, and five-nine-three-one-four, all for the tax year two thousand twenty. And we have a memo from the Tax Collector Shirley Cook regarding the refund amounts. Move to approve.
Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, your commission?
Lisa.
Yes, sir.
Is all these individuals or are there any commercial at all or just residential?
You want to come up, Ms. Finn?
I could have looked through each one of them and found that out, but I thought maybe you.
Most of them are, there is one that is a commercial. It is reduced by like a billion dollars.
Is that the one?
It's the one that sealed business cookies last week.
Yeah.
Okay, alright. What, on here, do you know right off which number they, how much did we have to pay?
Five-nine-three-one-four, the refund is nine thousand, seven hundred eighty-one dollars and seventy-five cents.
Yeah, I don't think it's on this one, maybe.
It's the second one.
It's on the, the one that Ms. Cook said, dated March sixteenth.
Okay, I got that. Thank you, Lisa. I would like to say, and I've said it in the past, when these come up, this is of no result of anything the Tax Office or the court has done. However, we are responsible for reimbursement of that. And some of these has been, from this conversation with Ms. Cook in regards to these, some of these is going to be kind of expensive. I don't know, in fact, there probably is no way around this, so we just have to pay them. Anyway, I just wanted to make that statement.
Yes, sir. On that particular one, it has to do with a value reduction. And then on almost all the others, it's because of homestead exemptions. One of them, the very first one, the five hundred eighty dollars and ninety-seven cents, it says the reason is for a one hundred percent disabled veteran. All the rest of them are valued, or this main one, the big one, is for a value reduction.
Thank you, Judge.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight, consider possibly approved extending the Families First Coronavirus Response Act beyond the last pay period in March, two thousand twenty-one. This is an item we addressed back in January, and the action of the court was to extend that. We felt at the time that the Congress was going to extend it anyway, so we extended it through the last pay period in March, which ended on, I think, midnight Saturday night. And Debbie informed me the other day that we needed to bring this back up for action to decide if we were going to extend it any further because it was not extended by the legislation that was signed on March eleventh. And I do believe, if I remember right, Ms. Mendesobal says we do have one employee. Is there more than one employee that's out at this time due to a COVID exposure?
There's one.
Okay.
There's one right now, yes, sir.
There's one right now, so if we do not extend it, that person would lose it effective Saturday night at midnight or whatever other action we take to help that person or any others we could do so at this time. Before we discuss it or take any action, does any elected official or department head want to speak on this? My recommendation would be that we go ahead and make sure that this one person who's out right now continues to receive that benefit through, until he or she comes back to work. And after that, that we don't extend it any further. But that's just me, and I'd like to hear what anybody else has to say.
I would like the court to look at maybe for new employees on a case-by-case basis and maybe grant the judge in HR the opportunity to make that decision. As if you have a new hire and they're here ninety days and don't have the full sick time, then maybe we look at, on, granted on a case-by-case basis, which I would think a hundred percent of new employees would be eligible. And then outside of that, those are my thoughts.
That probably is not a bad idea, but if we just do it for COVID, then I think the sheriff has made a request before on a new employee that didn't have time. If we do it for COVID, are we going to do it for average sickness? I mean.
I think it's COVID. Debbie, when a new employee is hired, when do they get their first forty hours of sick leave? When do they, when is that granted to them? How long do they have to be here?
On the day that they're hired. They get advanced forty hours sick leave.
So they have forty hours on the day they're hired? Okay.
Any, anything, if I understand it correctly, though, anything we do in regards to this, if the county was, if the court was to take action to renew this, we're going to be footing the bill because it's not funded anymore from the government, so.
Not at this time, anyway.
Right. I would go along with what the judge recommended with the current employee.
That was the commissioner. I think, right? Didn't you recommend that? Oh, okay. You were at a, at a, not renewing. Alright.
That, that might be something we can look into as far as new employees. I, I just think we would be discriminating. Well, she said they, they have that. I don't know how the other court feels about that for new employees.
Has anybody had to be out more than forty hours in the past year due to COVID, due to an exposure or an illness?
Yes, sir, and I'm just getting bits and pieces on the audio, so I'm not really hearing the full conversation, and I apologize.
Okay. Alright, well, Commissioner Cooper had said that he, he and Commissioner Kirkendall both said that they would go along with my recommendation, which was to make sure the person who's out right now would not get cut off. That person would still be covered through the time that he or she comes back to work. And that's due to an exposure, I believe you told me, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then after that, it would not be extended any further. So move.
Yes, sir. Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, second by Commissioner Young. Any discussion?
Judge, could we, in that motion, and I'll go along with it, but from what Commissioner Kirkendall recommended, could we consider that on a as-is basis? Once it comes up, we could consider it?
Yeah, I would think that anybody who's going to be docked because of being out due to COVID, we should bring that back to court and not, not see anybody get docked if they're out of sick leave.
Thank you.
What do y'all think?
I'll make that part of my motion.
Alright, and we'll bring it to court, case by case.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Debbie.
Yes, sir.
Item number nine, discussion of possible action to amend the hours worked and overtime policy to include emergency callouts with prior notification shall be compensated at the overtime rate for the hours worked due to the emergency other than during a disaster or emergency closing. Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you, Judge. Ms. Debbie, myself, and the sheriff have been appointed to look into this matter. I think the sheriff had brought up a good point this morning with the HR director.
Let me unmute you. Can you click on unmute so she can hear you? Okay.
Okay, the sheriff had brought up a good point this morning with the HR director of some departments not having an overtime budget line item in their budget. So, which was a good point. I think that this does not specifically say monetary, so it could be comp time as well, the way this reads. Anyway, I will put in the form of a motion that the Hardin County Policy, Section two A dash five, page two of two, would have an amendment of number thirteen that only has twelve in there now. Number thirteen to read as is on the agenda. Emergency callouts without prior notification shall be compensated at the overtime rate for the hours worked due to the emergency other than during a disaster emergency closing.
The information in our package only goes to number eleven, and there's an item highlighted that just says during that county approved holiday was the only thing changed in the policy. I don't see a twelve or thirteen, do y'all?
No.
Hold on one second, Judge. Can you type harder than that? According to HR, that's the newest version of our county policy.
Yes, that was.
I have through seventeen.
Sir?
I have, my copy has through seventeen.
That's eighteen. This says it was revised eleven-twenty of eighteen, but the one in our packet says revised one-fourteen of thirteen. So this is the newest one, and that's not what we were given. So item twelve is the new item?
No, sir. It don't, number thirteen would.
What you read off would be thirteen.
Yes, sir.
Sheriff, you said yours goes through number seventeen, then?
Yes, no, through sixteen.
Through sixteen.
With revision date of November of twenty eighteen.
That's on Section two A five and then page two of two, under on-call duties?
There's two, there's two different areas.
Correct. One of them goes through twelve. The first one goes through twelve, and the second one goes through sixteen. And this is all under title of Hardin County Policy, hours worked and overtime.
The one we were given has to do with policy on holidays, which is actually Section eight, it's not even, not even close to what you're reading off to us, but that's okay. We can get there.
Let's see.
We just need to get the right document for the minutes to give to Mrs. Austin.
Lord, did you put this in our packet? Do you recall?
That was from Michelle.
Okay. Hold on one second, Judge, I'll get there.
What you read off is exactly how it's on the agenda, if I remember right.
Yes, sir. This is, what is in our packet is actually from the policy, just from a different section. The most updated section is the one I read in my motion, which is two A dash five, page two of two, add number thirteen.
And just read that off again, so I can remember what it says.
Emergency callouts without prior notification shall be compensated at the overtime rate for the hours worked due to the emergency other than during a disaster or emergency closing. And this was recommended by TAC to Ms. Debbie to include that so it wouldn't interfere with our disaster policy.
Alright, and then you said that the sheriff had brought up that some departments don't have an overtime line item, so how would that be handled?
Comp, comp time.
Because it says it's overtime rate.
Yes, and comp time is based on overtime rate.
Okay.
So does that make the holiday part of the forty-hour work week?
According, according to Ms. Debbie and the disaster policy, it does.
Okay.
This overrides that.
That would be good for any department.
Any county employee.
Most other departments that don't have an overtime line item probably not going to have an emergency call out, unless we are on any disaster.
I honestly do not see any department in this, in the county, other than the sheriff and Roman Bridge, having an emergency call out.
Yeah, I agree. Does anybody in here disagree with that?
Your probation, your juvenile probation, they have an emergency call out.
Yeah, yeah.
Mainland's an IT code.
True.
It should be more. I still, I still go back to what I said earlier. I just think that that one day, that holiday or whatever, if there's two holidays, that they should be made part of that week. That it's just, you're getting paid as if you were here, no matter what. So if you come outside those hours of that day that it's a holiday, you should be either compensated or paid for it. I just, I don't think that emergencies should be part of it.
That's what this does, right?
Only for emergency call.
Only for emergencies.
Not in disaster.
Right.
But that goes back, goes back to this one.
During the week, that's not taken into account. If a person's called out the day after Columbus Day, they're covered.
Yes, sir.
Alright.
But that, that, I understand that, but I'm going back to what I was saying, just, and I use Ms. Austin's office as an example during elections. They do not get compensated for that time and a half, and they have to work that holiday before an election on Tuesday or Monday.
That, that doesn't count.
That's not, that's not an emergency call out.
That is something separate.
Right.
And that's a good point, but that's not an emergency call out.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. That's why, that's why I say we should have a policy that that day, no matter, that holiday is part of that week. It's part of that forty-hour work week, no matter if it's, you know, what day it is. It should, it's just that they were there. So if they got called out, it didn't matter. That eight hours or ten hours on that holiday was already part of their pay, and they should be compensated for overtime outside of that.
Well, Ms. Austin, if somebody works a holiday for an election, they get comp time at time and a half for that day, is that right? Okay, so we're compensating at time and a half. Is that your motion?
Yes, that is my motion, that if the sheriff or any other department head feels like that this would be a problem, I personally would not take any offense to letting this guy without a second.
The, let me go back and recap. Commissioner, your issue is that that holiday is not being counted as time worked.
Physically.
Towards, towards the calculation of time. Of time. And that's what, that's what you were interested in trying to get around as well. So that if they, they can't go in and call that eight hours, so until they make up that eight hours, it doesn't trigger that time and a half. Exactly. Okay, so the only concern, just for clarification on my end, Commissioner Cooper, are you, the, the journey that you're on to try to get the employee compensated for that, for that day, are you looking at comp time, are you looking at money? Are you looking at both? Are you going to give that employee the discretion to choose what he wants or not?
I would leave that, that's why it's generalized in the item. I would leave that to the department head.
Yes, I agree.
I think you and I have discussed that prior too, and.
Then that doesn't change anything on my end, because that's the way ours is set up. Now, the policy defers to my policy, and my policy dictates that it's comp time unless otherwise approved by me, and that's generally special occasions when we just truly can't get anybody to work, and if we've got the funds available.
This, this particular.
So that's not going to change anything on my end, so I would be very neutral as to any changes you've got. I don't have an opinion for or against, other than if we, if we made it to where the employee gets to choose, hey, I want money or I want time. I think at that point, we're going to have to go back and look at the funding, because that's something we haven't, we hadn't looked at in the budget this year, so.
Maybe it would be something that the department head would work out with the employee at the time of call.
Correct, because I do have employees that want time instead of pay.
Oh, I do, I do too.
That wants pay.
All my goons do, because they don't have any time off built up yet.
So, and something else to take in consideration, the reason behind the request that I'm making on this is only due to the weeks that we have holidays. And this might not ever come up again, but it has twice in the past six months with my department.
Except if you have a holiday on Tuesday, they get called out on Friday.
Right, now, we're already covered in our policy. If they get called out on that holiday, it's time and a half. We already have that covered. But if they get, if they get called out on Friday, which is technically our off day, it's hard for me to get someone to come out at five o'clock on Friday for straight time, so that's the reason behind it.
So is that because of the, because of the line item in the county's policy that says law enforcement is covered under Addendum one, does that, will that or will that not affect the law enforcement side? Because in here it refers to, overtime as defined by this policy shall apply. All employees eligible for overtime compensation under FSLA except for law enforcement employees, see Addendum one.
Aren't y'all on a ninety-six, two-week schedule?
Eight, yes.
Yeah.
And although this is not going to affect whether or not something is compensated, it's whether or not it's time and a half, because I'm in the same boat you're in. If my guys haven't worked his eighty-six hours, then he's straight time up until he hits eighty-six. And so if he took two days vacation, those two days aren't considered hours worked. Yes, they're in there, but they're not hours worked towards building his eighty-six. So he's got to come up with those other hours in order for it to go from straight time to, to comp time. So that's the only thing that would affect me on mine is if you change there, then, then I probably should have to go back and change my local policy that's referred to in the addendum to indicate that, that you no longer have to, we're not considering that, we're going to consider that holiday as hours worked towards reaching your overtime rate.
It's just not holidays, it's if you're sick, vacation.
Yes, or any, any leave.
You have to physically work forty hours before you're considered.
But we can't, we can make it in our policy that that day becomes part of that forty hours as a work day. That way, we don't have to deal with trying to get people out or emergency callouts or they got to work eight hours to get their overtime after that eight hours. If that day is considered a work day, that is, and even though it's a holiday, it's just as if they were here. They're getting paid just as if they were here. So it's unfair if they have to come out outside of those hours and not get compensated for it because they don't have that hours worked on that day. So if you added one line in the policy that said, any time off during the pay period will be considered actual time worked for the purposes of calculating overtime rate?
Yeah, I couldn't go for that.
Would that suffice?
I couldn't go for that, because if they take a vacation day, and for some reason you're having a call, I mean, at that point, then they're really are not managing anything.
And I agree with that. I'm not trying to say vacations are sick. I'm trying to say holidays, just on holidays, because they, they can control their off time for their vacations and stuff. But a holiday is something that we're granting as a county. So we need, we need to cover them on that day. It's already like as if we're here working, bottom line. You know, and if they have to come outside those hours of that holiday, I think they should be compensated for it.
I agree with that. I think we should just limit it to holidays and nothing's motion.
The motion did not include specifying that their holiday or anything, it just says overtime. Now, what we could do is at the end of that, put in there that it would be left up to the discretion of the department head, whether it be monetary or compensated, uh, comp time.
And, and, yeah.
Attention please, there has been reported of emergency. Proceed calmly to the nearest exit and leave the building immediately.
Just not during the Commissioners' Court.
Do not use the elevators, use stairwell where necessary. All handicapped occupants, do not use the building.
If we, Judge, if we left the line item like it is, with exception of the end saying left up to the discretion of the department head for a month for pay or comp time, we, we need to change the wording before we took action on that.
If you're going to add anything over than what it says on the agenda, I think we've got to take it and bring that back up and reword it on this.
And if you're going to make it just for holiday, as well.
I'm not, I'm not specifying holiday in my motion. Any emergency call outs, that covers it. Now, what he's saying is something totally different, because there are several places in our policy that says.
Oh, she's trying to differentiate, just like if someone talks on sick time or vacation time.
Yeah.
I think we would have to specify holiday.
Right, if that's for.
That way you don't pay time and a half if somebody took vacation Monday but called it on Friday. And typically, we'd probably call out somebody else anyway.
If somebody takes vacation, but we're kind of stuck with that holiday, and it all goes back. It'll solve all that problem of trying to get people to come to work. And I, granted, the emergency clause would too. But if we go ahead and pay for that day, so that day is on a holiday that we, we granted our employees, is a given work day, and put in there as, that's, that's as if they were here. Then if they come out on, you know, in Glenda's case, if they come, come in and work, they don't have to work that eight hours to end up getting that time and a half.
Does that have to be a written policy or can that just be SOP? Just something that's understood in the.
I think it would have to be in our policy, right? And that's, and that's what I'm saying.
Because you're changing, the labor laws, it's anything worth over forty hours. So you can give more, but you have to have it in your policy.
Okay.
And that's where we, we get that, that you have to physically work forty hours, that's in the labor laws.
Well, Commissioner Cooper's done here covers that, correct?
Yes, but it doesn't say holiday. So if they're all sick or vacation, what he's saying here, if they're called out at any time for an emergency, regardless if they work forty hours or less, they get time and a half.
But he wants to add the words, at the discretion of the department head, to the back of that. So we would need to put that on the agenda for next time to take action, is that right?
Yes, but then again, if he's going to just do it for anything, if you work less, we also get paid time and a half, you know, then that's okay. But if it's just for holidays, like some of the Commissioners were talking about, then that has to be changed.
I would withdraw my motion, and I'm not going to specify holidays. So I can, I'll just withdraw my whole motion, I, it'll be a dead item. Or it could die like a second.
No, if you withdraw, we'll just put it back on the agenda for next time.
Okay.
Whenever you're ready, just reword it the way that you want it, and we'll bring it back up.
Thank you.
Sheriff, thank you for checking the fire alarm. While you were out, it was discussed, and Commissioner Cooper's withdrawn his motion.
Can we just say table?
Table.
You can do that.
Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall to table item number nine. And will you reword that, get it back to us, and we'll bring it back up? All in favor of table of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number nine is tabled. Number ten, permission to solicit bids for overland approximately one point three miles on Cooks Lake Road and point eight mile. Number ten, permission to solicit bids for overland approximately one point three miles on Cooks Lake Road and point eight miles on Peck Road in precinct four.
So moved. Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number eleven, consider request to authorize the county judge to sign agreement for engineering, sanitary, and services relating to the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty Texas Community Development Block Grant Program for sewer projects. Mr. Sims, purchasing agent. Ms. Sims?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're working on getting an agreement, a proposed agreement. I don't actually have it yet, so we'll go to county attorney before, um, I'll bring it, you can sign.
I'm sorry, what?
We don't have the agreement just yet. I'm working on getting that, um, and they don't need to go to county attorney, so can we get approval for you to sign after county attorney approves?
We don't even have the agreement yet.
No, sir.
I would recommend that we table it.
Second.
Have motion by the judge, uh, seconded by Commissioner Cooper to table item number eleven. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item twelve, consider request to rescind authorization granted previously to apply for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two Texas Community Development Block, Block Grant Program and reject all proposals received to date and return or reject all proposals that are due on March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one for the grant administrator. Ms. Sims?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? I'd like to just add that the reason this has come up is that we would have to hire an engineer for this outside of, um, during the grant application process, and we have no idea what that cost would be. And so it was, uh, recommended that we go ahead and just scratch that for this year, and we'll try it again next year. Is that correct? Okay. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item thirteen, discussion only of any item not only agenda without taking any action. Anyone in the audience have a feeling? Yes, for Sheriff?
Judge, I'd just like to thank the Debbie and HR for, for what she's done to help on this with Commissioner Cooper and I. She's really been a good resource and pulls some data. I, I do think we're real close to that, being able to get something that's gonna be good for everybody, uh, without little to no impact on the budget, um, without having to change a whole bunch of stuff. And I really, I think we're real close to that. Um, the, uh, the other thing, just to let some of the staff know, we're trying to, trying to do some increases to the courthouse security side, and without getting into a bunch of details, uh, just a couple of quick announcements. You'll probably see some addition of some things here in the courthouse lobby. Uh, the judge and I are, are trying to collaborate on getting a little bit of something going to add appearance and deterrent and some more stuff here within the courthouse as far as security. So feel free to visit with me individually, and I'll, and I'll let you kinda in on what's going on and what our plans are there. You'll probably start seeing some activity in the lobby out here, uh, in the next couple of days. So I think it'll be a real good plus for, for all of us here, for the public that comes in and visits, and I think it's gonna be a good, uh, good visible deterrent to any possible, you know, problems that we may have.
Thank you, Sheriff. I wanna, yeah, commend Nubbin and the sheriff and Debbie as well, because it's a big, be a big boost to morale for, I know, Roden Bridge, and so thank you all for working hard on it.
And it's not an easy, it's not an easy policy. It's got a, a bunch of different tentacles to it. It's really hard. If you tweak one side, you affect the other, and, but I, I think we're real close to getting there, to satisfy everybody's concern.
We will thank you, Judge. Uh, I wanna just say thank you to everybody who's working hard on the immunizations, the health department, your office, and then Michelle's been real active in that, and, uh, so getting the word out. I think our citizens are responding very positively to that. Yeah, I think as of right now, there's a little over ten thousand Harden County citizens that have their first shot, and about fifty-seven hundred have both shots. And, uh, I've been asking for Johnson and Johnson. I know a lot of people are waiting to get that shot, and as soon as it becomes available to us, we'll get that. We do have some now at the health department, but we wanna get it through the hub so that everybody who's getting that first shot is, that's all they gotta get. And, uh, and they are doing a great job at that. It's, uh, not, not real easy, but a lot of people are, are complimenting them. Uh, you know, usually you hear complaints, you, you don't hear any attaboys, but they've gotten a lot of attaboys from people, so, uh, thank you for bringing that up, Mr. ... I wanna add to, uh, the third floor is on the new HVAC system as of about ten thirty yesterday. Is it comfortable up there?
It is.
Great. And hopefully the second floor will be up and running, uh, he says by noon tomorrow. Not all the second floor, but the second floor that's getting it this week will have it by noon tomorrow. And then hopefully, this area will get it pretty soon, because it's starting, starting to get a little stuffy in here now. Anything else from anyone else? Alright, item fourteen.
Move adjourned.
Yeah. Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.